Five thirty. We'll do pledge in all hours. Yeah, Dorothy has to probably just do it so she'll be here at six.
Is this being recorded?
Um, I don't know.
What's that?
Is this being recorded?
Yes.
Is it?
Do you want it to be or not? I told you, yes.
Is it being recorded?
I just, I see red.
No, I don't think we're on yet.
We're on.
We're on now?
We're on.
Okay.
Okay, let's go.
So that's a yes.
That's a yes.
It's a yes.
Up to you.
So for the, just to get started and we can go through each section, you know, the eleven hundred, twelve hundreds. This year, our default total in the federal grants and food service, and I'm just reading off of this pride color sheet here, excuse me, is seven point four percent increase over default from last year. And our operational or proposed budget is eight point four percent. So most of, the vast majority of our increase in the budget is in our default, which are items that were contractually obligated to, to the fund. So we can go through it, eleven hundreds and walk you through it if you'd like. And again, eleven hundreds are regular education. The biggest driver, one of the biggest drivers is our healthcare increase, which as of right now is, we have a sixteen percent placeholder. You'll see that throughout the budget wherever you see a healthcare line item. Excuse me, we're supposed to get the final number as early as next Monday, Tuesday's a holiday, and maybe by Wednesday at the latest. Cindy and a couple of the folks from our office attended the school care meeting that they had this past Monday. And they confirmed that that's when we'd be getting the hard number. But you'll see that, for example, just for our teachers, the increase, it's a combination of shift in plans, but also the sixteen percent increase in the tuition, I'm sorry, in the rate for our health insurance.
All around, it's like two fifty-ish for every department, all healthcare stuff, like two fifty? Hundred thousand. Like I did, I added up the regular.
Increase or total?
Total increase for healthcare and dental. I looked at like spend, all the departments and added them up. Does that make sense? Does it sound right?
Cindy's got her cheat sheet.
I got a hundred and forty-three thousand.
Oh, well, you know, I only added the positive numbers.
Yeah. The net increase in our insurance total is a hundred and forty-three thousand on the increase on the premiums, the premium.
I know, I just thought it sounded better.
Again, in the eleven hundreds, we increased our substitute line to be more in line with what our three-year average is, which increases the budget by forty-nine thousand five thirteen. We have replacement furniture, and I'm just going through the bigger ones that stand out, of thirty thousand three thirty-eight. Becky can speak to that in greater detail. I think we have it pretty much labeled there on the right-hand side.
Just continuing, replacing teacher desks and chairs, looking at replacing the library tables and chairs to be something that moves a little better and functions better for the everyday use.
Then the other two larger increases, a larger, you know, one is ninety-five hundred for math and focus consumables. And one of, these numbers I'm reading are increases over the current year. And then we have math information, I'm sorry, math, uh, reading practice books, an increase of fourteen thousand two seventy. And then science supplies also increased.
So our practice.
What percentage did you say it was? You said it, but I don't see it.
Those were sixteen percent.
Huh?
Sixteen.
No, no, the default, what increase percent?
Oh, the default was seven point four.
Seven point four, and that's over last year's approved, right? The number we're going on.
That's correct. And the operation increases eight point four.
I just, so between last year's approved.
Eight point six, right?
And this year is.
The summary page is a little bit different because it adds in the fed funds and the grants, so the percentage comes down a little bit because the gross is higher.
It's eight point four. So that's, that's the eleven hundred category.
Yeah.
You know, there's, you know, there's flexibility in the substitute line. However, the number we're proposing is based on a three-year average of usage that we pay for substitutes. We've been underfunding, underfunding it, so we were trying to put a realistic number in there. And the other one where there would be some flexibility from the board in the sense of it's something we would like to have would be replacement furniture items. Everything else in there are things that we need to have.
Where is that line item?
The.
The replacement furniture is five seven three seven.
It's important, okay.
Yeah, it's just the biggest increase on.
Yeah. Well, and that's what you've been doing, which is why it's zero along.
What do substitutes make?
Hundred?
A hundred dollars a day?
Hundred and, or a hundred or a hundred and ten.
Ten if they're certified.
And that line also helps cover, the teachers cover.
Yeah.
When they give up a planning period to cover another teacher that's out and we don't have a substitute, so that line.
Probably use more for that, honestly, than subs, because we have internal coverage more than we have sub coverage, which ends up costing us more.
It does.
Would also be long-term subs, if we had a long-term.
Did I? I have a question on the, the open PSYED kits. Didn't we talk about that in the meeting and budget for, didn't we already budget for that? We did fund balance, purchased a lot of them. They weren't all out and available yet.
Okay.
So this is getting to the next units for the ones that are available at this point.
Okay. And for that section, no.
Okay.
I mean. We're gonna have to, once the budget committee gives us their number, we'll have to.
Yeah, okay.
Fadoodles, I mean, I have ideas.
No, I do too. Okay, I understand.
Preemptively.
No, I understand. I think it's important that we show them what we need first.
I don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot.
Get the feedback and then make any adjustments. The next function code is eleven oh five. This is our tuition. We have one student who is tuitioned out of district, regular ed. And the next line item is our Pinkerton.
Do we have those numbers yet?
Pinkerton, when we met last month, towards the end of the month at their dinner, the fall dinner, they told us it was between six and eight. And Dr. Powers last Friday sent us all an email saying it's now between four and six percent increase. So this represents a five percent increase. We took the middle. One of the drivers is that we have nine additional kids that moved in. More, nine more than we projected.
Okay.
So we have to account for that for next year. Plus, it's nine, it's all, let me rephrase. It's nine additional students, including our eighth grade class that's coming in versus the twelfth graders going out. It's a net of nine that we have to cover for in our budget.
So we can tell the budget committee that too.
After that, we go into special education. Cindy, do you wanna talk about that first line?
Yeah, so the admin salaries is the director's student services and the BCBA. With this current year, twenty-five, twenty-six, the BCBA was not budgeted correctly. So you see a fourteen thousand dollar increase in that because the twenty-five, twenty-six wasn't correct. So it's not, they're not getting an eight percent increase, in other words.
I was like.
It appears they are, but they're not.
That's why I flagged it. I've got it flagged online as well. The next one, our paraprofessional line increased because we brought in three pairs over planning up. Let me get this right. We have two additional new pairs for next year.
We, um, yeah, and this year we've had two students move in that came with, like needed required paraprofessional support. And then we had a pair that was previously grant funded. That's needed for students as well.
Are we able to hire a director? Do we have to go through the agency?
We currently only have one contracted position. Everyone else is.
Yeah.
So we.
That's part of the increases.
In fact, we just hired one.
Is it's, you know, like it used to be under a different, like in a different area, and now it's under paraprofessional, so it's our staff.
Next, we go down to, or we can answer any other questions, but the, the health insurance is what it is. Is special edu, special ed, elementary, other professional services. This is, we needed a hire, or need to hire a contracted RBT. Can you explain what RBT is?
It's a registered behavior technician. So we have a student coming in with more significant needs that will require someone of the higher level of training.
So that's a behavior tech, not the.
Not the BCBA.
Right, so they work underneath the BCBA, so they can do like discreet trials, things like that for students with autism.
So that's a student.
Yes, it's an additional student.
One add student, okay.
Yep.
It's due to the additional student for why we need it.
Do we see our savings? Because this year we saved in the high school line, never mind.
Yes.
That's not in here, is it?
We will get to high school. This is, right, that's an elementary line.
Oh, here we go. There we go.
Yeah.
I see it.
And then the next increase of note is at the very bottom, special ed, elementary tuition to private school. We have an additional out-of-district placement student and one incoming preschool placement.
So one elementary out-of-district?
Yes.
Is it, that's a K three? No, that's a one through eight?
Yes.
Or a K three?
K through.
K through.
K three.
Pre-K through eight.
Five.
Yep.
K through five. And there's one preschool that falls in the law of what ages is it?
Yeah, uh, three to five.
Three to four.
Three to five, okay.
They can turn five, but three and four-year-olds.
One new regular, one new preschool.
Yes.
Yep.
Next is towards the top, the second category, twelve hundreds, special education, middle school. A slight increase due to additional support for that student. While, and I'm just sliding down to specialized high school tuition. Next year, we're projecting an increase of seventy-six thousand eight sixty-eight. However, if you look at the line below it for our tuition to high school, the private schools, not Pinkerton, it's gone down a hundred and thirty-three thousand. So this whole category, we actually save, it went down fifty-six thousand from this year.
As did middle school went down.
Yes, that's, thank you, but.
Yeah, so that's.
That's a good thing.
No, that's a good thing, because we're saving this year that we can.
Very good thing.
Well, especially when the other one is like very good.
That's more than the difference between the default and the.
Yeah.
Yeah, but unfortunately, the increase is.
Then, again, there's nothing significant. They might flag co-curricular salaries, but.
It's coaches and.
Coaches and mentoring, so, and that doesn't include the new contract. That's just what we currently pay.
Increases on the, okay.
And again, there's no salary increases because the teacher contract will be a separate warrant article. So that's why you see a lot of zeros when, when you see teacher salaries.
The two additional coaches, I don't remember. Those are for two new teams or two new sports that we were, I.
I can't even recall.
We have, uh, that would be volleyball.
Which we didn't have, right? So that's new.
That's new.
Yep.
And it would be the Rube Goldberg and Young Inventors programs that were new.
I was specifically asking about the coaches though.
I think that's it from last year.
Yeah, the first one.
The athletic coaches.
So one was volleyball, what was the other one?
Oh, the athletic.
Are we paying our.
That would be volleyball and assistant coach for volleyball.
Okay, so it's supposed for something we didn't have before.
That would be the only two new ones for this year.
Yep.
Did we have an assistant basketball last year? We did, okay. I feel like we had some new assistants.
No, we had, we may have had new coaches.
They weren't in the contract, but we've had them.
We've had them, that's why we put them into the.
And I think you're thinking we added them to the contract is probably what you're thinking.
We added the positions to the contract because we've been already paying them.
Yeah.
All right.
But they're not new.
Yeah, that would be the volleyball head and assistant.
Then.
Why'd you say that? What would it, so we get twenty-six thousand, how many, like what would the average shape and be for the co-curricular?
Seventeen?
Seventeen, nine?
I think it's probably the middle of the road one.
The class one through four, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're in classes.
About seventeen hundred.
Yeah, okay.
And if you add up the hours.
Uh, it's like.
Oh, yes.
Well, we're, like, this is why I ask. It's always good to offer like a new sport, I mean, that's something.
Yeah, oh, yeah. When the interest is there, I mean, because we still have baseball and softball listed and so far, we don't have enough for a team, although it sounds like maybe a year af, maybe next year, we might have enough for a club team for baseball.
That'd be good.
Which would be great to start that back up again.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anything else left on, on page two that's of any significance. On page three. At the very top, there's an increase of sixty-two hundred for Adventure Lore.
That should be in E S Y.
Should that be?
Do you wanna speak to that?
Um, yeah, I was just saying, it should be in E S Y though, instead of health. Adventure Lore is something we've offered in the summer through Title One. Our Title One funds have decreased significantly and also Title One is also used for like any event, which is homeless and, and some other things that we need to do, and those costs have grown significantly. So we were going to put Adventure Lore in the budget, and so typically it's for kids that are more at risk for, you know, social emotional needs, so we focused on that in the summer.
So do you want it in E S Y or you want?
Yeah, it'd be E S Y.
Okay.
E S Y, other professional services.
Okay, I'll make that change. What grant would it be paid out of?
Because I did look it over.
Um, there, how much, the rest of it is?
No, the sixty-two hundred, what, Title One, ninety-eight?
Title One.
Move to E S Y.
And it was funded under Title, Title One, but no longer.
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's still a minimal amount of funds in Title One, but not enough to cover it, so this is the rest.
Do our summer school kids take advantage of that?
Yep, and they, so also parents pay tuition for summer. And so that covers the cost. This is for students that would qualify.
For E S Y services.
For, yeah, services either because they're at risk or E S Y services beyond the kids that pay tuition.
Got you.
I had a question. If that increase for the dental and the health insurance was like six, seven, eight, how much of a percentage increase do you think we'd be over the default, a whole percent? It would be like half?
Yeah, be half.
That's.
Well, it would, it takes.
Well, it's a hundred and forty thousand, so.
Well, we would save at least eighty thou, seventy to eighty thousand at least if it was that low.
Difference is a hundred and fourteen, so I mean, that's the primary draw by far, right?
Yeah.
At least on the meeting on Monday, it won't be that low.
Well, it's going.
At least on the meeting on Monday, it's okay.
We're, we're, we hope that it stays at sixteen.
Well, that, and I've heard that a lot of schools are.
Not, not to be alarmist, but we're, some districts got in their initial, like we got sixteen, others got twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent hikes.
Have we priced out the other options?
We have to wait for, we've reached out and we can't, they can't do anything. No, cross and everybody else, the Health Trust. We need our numbers from Cigna for, I'm sorry, for school care for next year. Once we get that, we send it to the companies we've reached out to see if they could manage our system better than school care. Then we'll, we'll get more information. Once we, once we get it from school care, we're gonna push it out and then we'll start getting responses back.
If we, you think it might come in a little high, would it?
It could.
Is there a point where it might be possible, it might be feasible to offer a buyout, maybe go on your health insurance or your spouse or someone? Like cost effective for us, actually cheaper to say, hey, has somebody, go get your.
We have a buyout provision, we have a, we have a buyout provision in our contract. I believe we increased it in our proposal.
It was five, but now it's more.
No, it was three.
It was three and now we're at five.
Okay.
Even if the, I mean, that's something the board could consider. We'd have to get a, work with the union on an MOU, you know, for this year, just to see if we could. Would that be for this year? Cindy, or next year before I talk on a turn? If we wanted to increase the buyout on health insurance, would it be for next year? All right, so we need to see if the contract passes first. And then if it, if, for whatever reason, if it didn't, then we could do an MOU with the union.
And I know you had said it, but I, when are we getting the final number?
We hope, they told us Monday at the earliest, Wednesday at the latest of next week.
Do you get a sense of how much worse it's gonna be or based on what they?
I don't know.
Is it?
The way these guys are operating. If we get sixteen percent, call it a non-win, you know?
I think towns.
I can't imagine it's gonna go lower. I just don't.
Well, you just said it wasn't, right?
I, I don't foresee it.
I was telling Bill earlier at the meeting, they had their minutes from, oh, sorry. They had their minutes from last year's meeting at this time, and they said that they, they anticipate a minimum of fourteen percent for twenty-five, twenty-six increase because their rates hadn't come out yet. And that would have covered the assessment also. When we got our rates for twenty-five, twenty-six, we're at five point two percent. So I feel like that's where they dropped the ball.
Oh, they didn't raise it enough.
They did.
They had an internal memo saying we should get fourteen less for this year, and we got a five point three.
Which everybody's happy with the five point two percent, right? But then not knowing what was gonna happen this year.
I'm feeling a lot of people are gonna jump ship.
Well, we're looking.
Well, and Cross told me, I've had several calls.
Yeah, all three districts, you know, in the SAU, we're looking to see if someone else can do it better.
When you said other districts would get hit with the twenty-five, thirty, was that this carrier or a different carrier?
No, the school care.
Luckily, that was all in the news, so it's not a surprise.
No. It was a surprise getting the memo in the end of August, or the end of September, excuse me.
It's not covered by grants anymore.
No. I'm just on twenty-one fifty. I'm just sliding down from where Adventure Lore was. Psych services went up because we had students needing, some students needing additional services support. The speech teacher salaries, we used to pay this out of other professional services, five three three oh.
Which page do we need?
I'm sorry, page three, right?
Why, okay, so.
And I'm like, speech teacher, this used to be paid out of five, the other professional services line, and it really belongs here because we hired the person. We were paying it out of five three three oh because we were contracting previously. That's why it shows an increase, but there's a decrease. If you look down here, where it says a hundred and four thousand three sixty-five, that's where we used to pay for it, so that's why we save a savings there. Costs us less to hire the person than it does to contract out.
Got you.
And then the others, they're, they're just minor, what we did was we built in five percent placeholders because we haven't gotten our contracts for therapy, OTP, things like that.
And the staff development, co-curricular salaries, that's your curriculum development, academic intervention, PD, RIP. It was up to forty-one hundred. I know you wrote where it is, but they won't get that. Is it because we've lost grant money or?
It's, it is. It's putting it more in line with what we've actually been spending out of that line, and it's not having as much grant money to spend on professional development.
The Title Two dollars have significantly increased.
I forget where I read that.
At the federal level.
I just wanted to make sure I wasn't.
It was a combination. One, it was to make it closer to what we're expending, but it's also due to a reduction in our Title Twos. Next page, I, if there's any questions, be happy to.
The school board's darned money.
What'd you say?
I said the darned school board wanted more money. Legal district, what was this, fifteen, uh, legal and consulting, I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer. We used a little bit more for.
But we still haven't resolved the bus issue.
Yeah, bus, so that's nothing. These are just normal contracted increases, right? Oh, yeah, they're in the default.
Hey, Becky, for secretarial salaries, there's three or four?
Uh, that should be one and a half. I don't think, yeah, that would just be Becky and Patty.
And so Stacy's secretary's in her.
Yeah.
In her line, yeah.
Sorry, Patty's only part-time, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the custodial salaries is two full-time, two part-time, so we weren't. We're in need of those, or contracted services we used last year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're still using them this year because we can't find anybody. And when we do find folks, they, they leave for, they like it here, but there's always seems to be something that comes up where they either find a better paying job or something happens in their personal life.
Yeah, that seems to happen a lot.
Life happens.
Do we actually play basketball here?
Yeah. We can, we don't, we try, we don't play games here, but we have practice here.
But for gym.
Alright. Yeah, I don't remember my kid having a game here. No, but they practice and then Shauna does basketball.
Oh, yeah, one hundred percent, oh, yeah.
Right, he's part of gym, gym class, he uses it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then. And on the last page is two that, that, uh what's, oh, three that I call attention to, one is specialized transportation line. Is sixty thousand, seven oh eight, of an increase. And then for I T, I T supplies and I T info fees. You can see what those are for, Becky can speak to them. Also, um if you get asked by the Budget Committee why the I T salary went up. We did, Dylan isn't uh, is our tech director, so the salary match is, is corresponding with his position before.
Couldn't find a tech director.
We didn't, and we had to pay Dan a stipend on the back end, we're not paying that anymore.
Where would the decrease be, though? Oh, there we go.
To find it.
I did.
And the info access fees is up, but look at the software line, it was just moved to be in the proper line.
So where would, oh, where would it, Dan?
It would, Dan would have, was paid as a consult, consultant, I think.
Oh, he was.
Roma.
He was paid as a consultant, yep.
I wonder what line it would have been.
Remember what line we paid him under?
Uh. It was the other professional services, I believe.
Other professional.
I T five-three-three-oh. No, we paid him much more than that.
Yeah, much.
He was getting like twenty-five.
Yeah, he was getting like twenty-five thousand.
It was, it was twenty-five, cause I'm looking for it.
We can find out one line for it.
I just, so that we can say, hey, look here.
Yeah, yeah. Also, what this number doesn't include is the hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar assessment.
We're gonna pay that out this year's budget.
Well, that's what you have to, where, two, the board needs to do two things tonight. One, if you don't wanna make any changes, you gotta vote to move the number forward, so we consider the budget committee. Second is the school care assessment, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, six fifteen. I know we talked about it previously, but we didn't take any action, we just talked about it in general, Cindy, do you wanna? Cause school care gave us an update on Monday on how we could possibly approach it.
So, uh, but we actually got an email today confirming, if we pay a third of the assessment by December thirty-first, and then pay the balance by July fifteenth, there is no interest charge.
Third by December thirty-first.
So it's somewhere around thirty-four thousand, I think. And we have the, um, we also have the thirty-two thousand, five hundred in every source that we received. So my feeling is to play it safe, since we're not, we don't have any penalties in, in interest that they're charging. My recommendation would be we pay the third by the end of December and wait until July to pay the balance.
Do we have to put the balance in our budget?
No, we'd put, no.
Oh, we could, um, and cover the funds.
You don't, yeah, you just do it as a, you just pay it at the fund balance.
Just not pay the bill until then.
Right, right, I got you, okay.
And we just pay it in the spring, when we do our fund balance in May and June, or June, whenever we meet.
Does anybody wanna alter this budget, or send it as is to the committee?
I'd recommend extending the assets.
Me too.
I just, my one question for you is, do you think they're gonna try and go below the default like you did?
Yes, one hundred percent. Because eight point whatever percent is not sustainable. It's a direct quote.
So do you think that they believe if the people that showed up at the deliver to pull their thing, and it went to the ballot, they think their number would have passed and not the default?
And there are a lot of townspeople who, it just depends on if it's cold, snowy, whatnot, if the senior.
Worse the weather, the lower the turnout. Usually.
I mean.
Can, can we do it officially, I'm taking the minutes, so Mark, you wanna?
So, anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion that we submit the budget to the Budget Committee as is.
You have to save a dollar amount.
Oh, the dollar amount?
Yeah.
I'll get back to that.
It's the twelve million and five oh, right?
So that'd be the twelve million, fifty thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars?
Yes.
Uh, I'll send it, alright, wait a second. All those in favor?
I thought it was eleven, seven, five.
Well, we have to vote on this bottom number, with the school.
You have, with the federal provided this. You guys got a smaller version, but we have to include these revenues in the, in our budget, because if we don't get those revenues, then.
We're at nine point six percent.
We can then spend money to, um. So five oh on it? Now, how would you like to handle that? Assessment?
Do you need a motion?
I would, yeah, if you could.
I'll make the motion that we pay the third of the.
Assessment.
Assessment by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five.
I'll sign.
All those in favor? I want to carry a clause in.
Thank you. Where is everybody?
We already called our budget issue meeting to order, but I'll call, is Becky here?
Yeah. She's back there, out of camera view.
Uh, November sixth, six oh five, the uh Candia School Board Meeting. Yeah. We have a, um. First pledge of allegiance.
We have um one of our eighth graders here tonight, this is Evy Palmer, stand up Evy. Um I invited her, she's been really just doing so great this year, um we had red ribbon week last week, and Evy during her free time, she helped our Lancer Lounge do our swag bags and pass them out, and she just really helped with a lot of all that stuff, and making sure all of the things we were doing were ready for our staff. Um she is a big sports lover, she's on most of our teams, she does soccer, she's gonna do volleyball this year, basketball and track. Um she loves to do, play basketball at recess time, her favorite class at school is math. She has two younger siblings here at our school, and she's so helpful to them, especially her little brother. Um and she's really excited to go to Pinkerton, um especially for all of the sports opportunities that she will get there, so. So Evy?
Good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Evy.
We got your little something.
Little something, something.
A pin for you. She has a pin for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Evy.
Okay, so now we have the proof of posting. And our Pinkerton liaison, Rebecca, how's it going?
I'm good.
Yeah, you know, great.
About on the fifth, um and we have got some upcoming days off on the tenth and the eleventh. And on the twelfth, we have a performing arts recital, and then we have sophomore semi on the fifteenth. And uh we have our C T cap night on the twentieth, and also on the twentieth is Pinkerton's God Talent. We have no school the twenty-sixth, the twenty-seventh, and the twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving. Um the winter play is going to be the fifth through the seventh in December. Um and congratulations to both our boys and girls cross-country teams who both won at states. Um and they both qualified for New England's, and the boys are going on to the meet of champs. And I think that's soon, I'm not su- sure when the date of, for that is. Um and volleyball and soccer both made it past the semifinals, and so they're both on to the state championships, which I think both of the games are on Saturdays, I'm not a hundred percent sure on the times for those.
Saturday, four-thirty.
Four-thirty.
At Memorial?
I know. Yeah, um, and that's pretty much it.
Alright, thank you Rebecca.
Is there new social studies building open?
Yes, it's open.
Oh, yeah.
Classes going on?
It's been open.
I had a ceremony in September to officially open it, but it's been open since last year.
Yeah, it opened second semester last year.
It's nice, it's a nice, they did a nice job, well, and it came in under budget.
Oh, hey!
On time and under budget, like that.
Sounds good, any other questions or? Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you. Thank you Rebecca.
Have a good Thanksgiving. Uh minutes. I looked for the, was that date discrepancy in the minutes? Or the place for the, not that it much matters for the S A U meeting, was that in here?
No, I think it was, uh, yes.
It was, I just couldn't find it really quick, when I looked at it quickly. Oh, yeah, the last line. I don't know how much it matters, but the S A U meeting was in hooksett.
Yes, we can make the, we can note it, you don't need to make a motion or anything.
Alright. So we have a motion for these?
Move to approve the meeting minutes from October second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board. Are we able to see if we have any viewers online? Just curious.
It says there's two viewers, one of them is me.
Okay, so we have one viewer. Alright. Superintendent's report?
Yep, just, I'd like to add, Becky shared with me an email a couple of days ago, I didn't get a chance to put it in my report. The D O T is having a meeting here on November eighteenth at six-thirty to discuss and to go over the plans to improve the intersection at Route twenty-seven, Route forty-three and Raymond Road. And that will be at six-thirty, open to the public here.
I.
Sorry, go ahead.
So, uh, when I posted that on um the Facebook page, there was a lot of comments about why it wasn't moved to the town offices so Zoom could be utilized. Um and I reached out to uh the project manager and the uh public information officer to see if anybody from Candia had reached out to them asking for that. Um their response was, nobody from the selectmen had reached out, but somebody from the conservation committee did. They will not be moving the, the meeting from here to town offices, but they were going to contact the school to see if Zoom was an option.
Zoom is not.
We don't. Um, yeah, I mean, if they, I, I don't, if we can have someone available that night who knows how to run it. Who has it?
So we don't have Zoom.
I'd need to see if we have employees, yeah, it wouldn't be Zoom, it would be this.
Why are we talking about this now?
Well, they wanted to see, for the.
I only mentioned the fact that they wanted at the meeting.
But nobody's reached out to us, so.
Yeah, I haven't heard from anyone yet.
The D O T reached out to us to say.
Do they have it?
They're just, they're reserving the space.
Right.
So they should have this.
And they were letting us know.
It's up to them, it's their meeting.
Yeah.
So the D O T should have.
We're just letting them use.
Right, like, we could let them use our wifi.
Yeah.
If they want to hook up Zoom.
Oh, okay. And if anybody wants to look up the project, it's Candia, four one five, nine two. Yeah, this is like separate from the select board and everything, it's a little odd. Um they planned the meeting and then notified us, so. It's a state project, so, yeah.
State roads.
Yeah. Um, so the, I got another email.
Sure.
For the time committee thing, are you going to that?
I can't, because I have a Budget Committee, the time committee, the uh, they call it the start time committee, but they're not talking about the start times. They're looking at, at Pinkerton, they're looking at.
Well, the busing.
Uh, the busing, to see if bus routes can be consolidated, um using software packages and things of that nature. The next meeting is November thirteenth, I believe at six o'clock.
Yeah, I wonder if they have Zoom.
At Pinkerton, they do Zoom, you can.
They do?
You can clock in, or we'll sign on.
Google meet, okay.
Yeah.
So November thirteenth, six P M. Hold on, let me look to see if I can. That's next week?
Yes, next Thursday.
Yeah, I'll, I'll log in, see if I can.
Okay.
Let's see, any questions on the administrators' reports? I have two for Kimberly, but not a deal. I do have a question, maybe you can help me.
I'll try.
It's on Kimberly's report.
Alright.
The open enrollment.
Yep.
Thing.
Yep, I can explain it.
So, we.
Open enrollment, there was a, uh, about two, three weeks ago, uh, the Supreme Court ruled, uh, it was Pittsfield versus, I think I get the name of the district wrong, so I apologize, uh, something mountain.
Prospect?
Prospect Mountain. Um Pittsfield uh went to court just uh basically saying they shouldn't have to pay for their kids to go uh to Prospect Mountain, because they're an open enrollment district, cause they were an open enrollment district.
They're not, they're not, right.
Supreme Court, they didn't hear the defense from Pittsfield, they just basically took all the facts and made a, a call, a decision. The decision was, the district, if they're, if they declare an open, they're an open enrollment district, students from any district in the state of New Hampshire can go there, even if the, the sending district.
Is not part of it.
Is not part of it.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean kids can just pick and choose what districts. A district has to be declared an open enrollment district for another district to send their kids there, so in other words, if we wanted to send our, our, a family said, we wanna send our kids to District X.
We're not open.
But they're not an open enrollment district.
Neither are we.
But it, it, it does, it's if, where they wanna go is, and that's the decision.
Okay.
The open enrollment decision, is if a district is open enrollment, you have to pay eighty percent of your uh per pupil cost to that district for that kid to attend. You still reserve the right not to be an open enrollment district, open enrollment district to accept any kids. But that decision kind of turned everything on its head, because now, right now, there are only two districts in the state that are open enrollment districts. If there's more of an increase, because I, I talked to our attorney about it, how would you even project that in your budget? From one year to the next, i- if it was just open enro, if it was a free fo- free-for-all, pick and choose where you go, you wouldn't have no way, you couldn't budget, you wouldn't have any idea on how to budget, cause you wouldn't know how many kids are leaving.
So right now, we're not open enrollment.
We're not an open enrollment district.
So we don't accept.
We don't accept.
But if somebody here wanted to go, they'd have to go to one of those two schools.
If they wanted to go under that open enrollment law, you also have, you still have laws on the book called best interest of the child. Family has to come, they can come to me or superintendent and make their case for why they shouldn't attend Henry Moore and go to another district, or not attend Pinkerton and go to another high school. And it's pretty rigorous what they have to, it just is, well, I don't want, my child doesn't like it there, that doesn't cut it, they, it's gotta be, you know, child suffers from severe anxieties, things, you know, there's medical documentation, et cetera, et cetera, um that I go through and then make a determination as to whether a child could go.
So we still get the state portion of the adequacy grant?
Yeah.
And then we pay eighty percent of the cost?
No, no, under the open enrollment, we, we just, we just pay the tuition, we pay the tuition.
But we still get the adequacy?
Yes.
Okay.
We still get the adequacy.
But, there's only two schools in the state.
Right.
What, two districts?
Only two.
Prospect Mountain.
Prospect Mountain's one, I don't know what the second one is.
Where's Prospect Mountain?
Almont.
Almont.
Okay, good to know.
That's kind of where we are.
Did I notice on Becky's report, the uh, number eighteen out of four hundred and forty-three, oh, go Henry Moore.
I actually had a voicemail today from someone in town named Martha Kimball, I don't know if anybody knows who that is.
I've seen them on Facebook.
But, um, she just left me a voicemail today congratulating us on that. Thought that was really nice.
And you were, what were, what were eighteen?
Yeah, we were um, eighteen for elementary out of four hundred and forty-three and thirty-seven out of two hundred and seventy middle schools. So top five percent and top fifteen percent.
What were we, who, who did the assessment or determine it?
This is the US News and World Report one.
Did they do it annually?
Yes. Yeah.
Do you know what our position was the last time, like, I'm just curious how much.
We were, I didn't look at.
We didn't make it.
We didn't make it at all?
I mean, it was.
We had to, I mean, out of the whole state, they.
Well, yeah, everybody's ranked.
Yeah, we weren't like.
Yeah, so we jumped quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
Couple above Hooksett.
It's great.
We're above Hooksett?
Elementary we are, not middle school, but elementary.
What's, uh, Hooksett's middle school ranking?
Their middle school's sixteen and their three-five is twenty-two.
What about Auburn?
Auburn was thirty-something, I think.
So we're ahead of both of them?
In elementary.
And for an SAU, we're doing pretty damn good. Lock that out Dylan.
It was very exciting to do that.
Ten second kill switch.
I, I love the little poems.
Yeah.
The, um, was it kale or goat cheese?
Goat cheese.
Um. We already, oh, mento. Do we have to talk about that? We can't really?
Not in public.
Okay.
We have it in public tonight?
Yes.
Okay, so I didn't have any questions on that either. I just thought it was interesting to see the survey for the special, I thought it was cool. Anybody else? So we're good. Uh, standing committees, Dana does his magic, I don't know how we're gonna replace him. Uh, mark any building maintenance we should. Are you?
Probably. They do it every Tuesday morning and.
Yeah. Okay. Um, I have nothing for the budget committee because we meet next Wednesday.
Yeah, we're meeting at the end of the month, right?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
At six thirty, changed, their budget committee meetings um, changed from seven to six thirty.
I'm glad I asked.
Yes. Twenty-fourth here at six thirty.
Okay.
Here?
Here.
In the live media center.
And six thirty.
Much better.
Um.
Every minute counts.
Goals.
No changes.
No changes. Um.
Already did budget.
Uh, budget we did, determined deliberative session.
Yeah, at our, at our last, at our last meeting, uh.
Yeah.
I did some research, Janu, January thirty-first, I'm unavailable because Auburn already booked it. So I have to be in Auburn on the thirty-first.
What time?
Nine o'clock. I have to be in Auburn at nine, or eight thirty.
So I'm assuming Cindy does too.
Yeah, Cindy's with me.
So, that would mean.
We go back to our Thursday.
Thursday the fifth?
At five o'clock.
We would do our school board meeting before five o'clock.
That's what we've always done, yeah.
Thursday the fifth, two, five.
And then we adjourn and walk down the hallway.
And then the deliberative, yep, six P M, okay, and then the snow date would be? Saturday to seven. Two, seven, nine A M, okay.
So five P M on the fifth?
Five P M on the fifth because we'll hold our regular school board meeting prior and then the.
We make it at a light agenda and then we just go right to the deliberative.
Well, that's unfortunate that we can't do the thirty-first. The town was really excited.
Unless you wanna kill an afternoon.
No, because we were, our theory was to get the, we don't know when the town deliberative is gonna be over, so to have people leave and come back. If we did the school at nine, everybody would.
I can't.
Here and then.
You gotta be.
What time is the uh, snow date on the seventh?
Nine A M.
Nine?
Okay, that was easy. I just guess we'll have to book it much earlier next year.
Just do it in September and call.
Yeah, we'll have to book it in September.
Well, next year, we go second, so I wouldn't have to be there until like ten, ten thirty.
Okay, oh, maybe we can do that, alright. Okay, the public livestream discussion. I just wanna, we have a policy on that. Eh, bede bede, B E D H, where it just states that we allow for public to make comment. We really don't go back and forth. I mean, occasionally we can answer a question well, after the public speaks, but we've run into some problems in the past when some heated issues were coming up, so we as a board decided that we wouldn't, we would hold to the policy. Um, and I think it's a.
All three boards have that policy.
Yeah, and it's a, they have how many minutes to speak?
I think it's five.
Five, and then if it's a big, uh,
If it's a hot topic.
We've decreased it to like three minutes or something, yeah.
That's pretty much the policy, all the other boards and committees in Kenya as well, as far as I know, to not specifically the time limit, but the fact that they don't go back and forth, right?
Yeah, it's not like a discussion.
Yeah.
I think that if people were to view or to come to a meeting and had some, like, some serious questions, they can always email Becky.
They can always email Becky or myself or.
Uh, Bill, or, and then if they feel that they don't get anywhere, they can email us.
And email you.
So, I guess, it's kind of stemmed from online stuff.
Yeah. School lunch price.
Yeah, really unhappy.
Increase, I should say.
Um, so, I understand that they can watch it, but they can't co, like, if they can't physically be here for whatever reason, childcare issues or
Yeah.
Whatever it is, they can't make it physically to the meeting.
I would.
They can watch it, but they still can't.
Make a public comment.
Make a public comment.
But they can, they could.
Request that we put their public comment in the next agenda if they wanted.
We could do that, or they could email prior to the meeting, whatever concerns they had.
Yeah.
Whatever they want to say, they can send an email to the board and we can read it down, it, as, as part of the discussion.
Yeah.
Saying we got an email from a resident who said X or Y, or whatever they might have to say.
So, earlier, we had asked, and there was one person watching our meeting tonight, have, do we have any, like, stor, data going back since? Because I suspect that there's not a lot of people actually watching our videos, but there are people complaining that they can't comment. So, do we actually have any data?
Do we have historical data for the last few meetings?
I'm not sure, I would assume yes.
We can get, we can get, we do have it, I don't.
I don't know if you can tell who watched it live versus who's watching, recording now.
If this system's similar to Hooksett, and I know this is newer.
Yeah.
We have two sets of data points, we have who's watching it live, and then who like watches it, like, when they, you know, have nothing better to do on a Saturday afternoon or something, they want to watch us.
What I was ma, gonna make is that we, we've never really taken our cues from social media, like how we conduct our affairs. Um, because I think there was something about the therapy dog that I saw, and the information being presented wasn't a hundred percent accurate. So, I mean, has anybody had, anybody in person complaining to them that we're not, I haven't. Well, I just like kind of wonder where this is coming from.
No, my, my only thing is, is we, we have it recorded, it's there, you can email, you know, and if they want their, their comment part of the public, they can always request that it be put in the meeting packet.
Correct.
I know that there was some confusion about why we raised the price of school lunch without contacting the community first. But, we normally don't.
But we do that.
I mean, we do our budget every year.
We do that through our agenda, that's our notification.
Yeah.
Serious, and not to be equipped, not to be, you know, funny about it, but we do post the agenda and that's, that's the notification, that, of, of topics that will be discussed on a given meeting.
How far in advance is the agenda posted, so that people can?
How far do we post the, when do we post the agenda?
Uh, I post it the day you get your packet.
Usually that's the Thursday or Friday before the meeting, so almost, almost a week.
Yeah.
What would it entail if we were to say, we're, alright, we're gonna start doing Zoom, so?
We can't do back and forth with YouTube.
We don't have that capability.
No, I know, but if we wanted to do that, it would be a major undertaking?
Yes.
Yeah.
We spent thirty-six thousand on that.
Right, again, again, we, we got the system because we heard folks, oh, we want to know what's going on, we want to be able to see and, and observe. Well, the board did that and you get the system, now it's like, okay, let's move that goalpost a little more. Now we want to be interactive with it, well, the way to be interactive is to come and.
Or email.
Or email, or.
Call.
Pick up a phone, cellphone.
We're still the only board or committee in town that actually is videotaping their meetings, live streaming them via video and archiving video, correct?
Well, the select board does Zoom.
I think they.
And they have a recording.
They have video now?
Recorder, no, they just have an audio recording.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, we're the only board.
We have the video.
Committee in the town of Kenya that actually has video.
Archive.
Streams video and archives.
Cause Zoom is video, there's Zoom.
But they're not using the video part of it?
They are. Well, during their meetings, they have a, you know, their big.
But what they archive is just audio, correct?
Oh, so they're live streaming video but only archiving audio? Why are they archiving the video?
Is it Zoom and I don't think you can record it, or if you, maybe they don't know how to record it?
You can record it.
You can record it.
You can, you get a, you get a note after it runs and you can keep it or you delete it.
And then there's an issue of ADA compliance. On the Zoom. Cause we had a school in our district got sued a couple, well, maybe ten years ago now? For not having ADA compliant video.
Closed caption.
Closed captioning, so, the town has their way around that.
Yeah.
I just. Do we have any data on like how many people are actually watching our archived videos?
Dylan's gonna pull that.
We'll pull it, we can get it.
We'll pull it and have it for you.
Cause if there are people saying they.
No, we can, we, I'm, I'm almost positive that we have that ability.
Yeah.
And it, there'll be two sets of numbers, again, one would be live viewing, uh, people watching, and then people that just, you know, bang in and watch it whenever they want, we can get that for you for our next meeting.
It's ironic that, like, part of this, the discussion about we need to have Zoom, there was other topics and there was information that was inaccurate, but they would have, some of these people would have known if they had watched our videos. So, I'm trying to reconcile, like, people complaining about us not having the public input option during our meetings, but then making comments on previous meetings that they wouldn't have made if they hadn't watched those meetings.
I don't know, I think this one comment came from, not a video archive, this comment came from, uh, they, you know, we notified our families that as of January one, there would be a slight increase in the cost of watch.
And we delayed it too, so there was time, people can come to December's meeting and.
Yeah, like if they're really, I mean, they can send emails, they can.
Because we purposely put off doing it until January, to give families time to get, to adjust for.
One of the items in the SAU, um, it's not an audit, it was a.
Oh gosh, assessment, thank you Cindy.
Was the food services and keeping an eye on that, because the totals blew my mind about how much funding we were getting for food during COVID.
Yeah, and how it's decreased.
It's crazy how much money we were getting, and now we're not, and we keep overspending, but yet we're on default budgets, so we have to do something. So we decided to raise prices, which is really unfortunate, but then we can have new applications for, we don't have students that go without.
No, and we make it as easy as possible for parents to fill out the free and reduce hot lunch forms and.
That kind of brings me to our next agenda item.
But what about?
Oh wait, we, do we have any more on the public input on livestream, sorry? I mean. Yeah. I mean, we want public input, I, emails, I mean, what, I, I would love to know what the town wants, but.
Is, do you send info out, do you blast for the board, do you have a?
Maybe we should.
I think, yeah, I think.
Just to remind parents. Well, yeah, that's what we do, and we do that in Hooksett, we, we just do, we have a school board, Facebook, and it's just info out, people can make comments on it, but we don't engage, we don't interact.
Well, yeah, okay, it's up to the promise.
Yeah, we don't want to interact.
No, we just, like, we send out stuff, like, we had a facilities meeting the other night.
But then you're gonna be careful of how many comment, because then it becomes an illegal meeting.
No, we don't comment.
As far as.
We just push, you just create, you just create a, a page and you push stuff out.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we should do that.
And that's run by the administration?
Run, the board runs it.
Does anybody want to volunteer for that?
Board runs it.
Well, what would we post, like our agenda?
Upcoming meeting, here's the agenda, important items.
Jillian posts, uh, usually just agenda minutes, just minutes, say upcoming board meeting. And we post the agenda, um, you can send out reminders, uh, we do stuff at the beginning of the year for buses, like, it would mirror some stuff that Becky sends out, but, they, they don't send a lot out, but it's just to remind people, like, um, we send out the.
I'm not tech at all, like.
It's up to you guys, if not, don't worry about it.
For the DOT.
I think if we did that, it would be better than.
I'll do it. Yeah, it's, it's a little, it's a little bit more than what we can do. That's excellent.
Who's doing it?
Wish I had thought of it.
Okay.
So, are we going to post our agenda?
Agenda.
Prior to meetings and then minutes post-meeting?
Yeah.
Or you could say minutes are now available on the website.
Yeah, and you just put the link.
Put the link.
And you just put the link.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if there's anything that we know that's like important coming up, like if we are to discuss.
You can say the board will be this.
Important or not, if it's in the agenda, we're posting the agenda, we've done our due diligence.
But sometimes if somebody doesn't want to read the agenda.
You can put, after you post, or before you put the agenda up or at the bottom, however it's framed, say, if you have any questions about any, if you can't make the meeting,
Yes.
You can either watch it or email board members.
Yeah.
With any questions you may have about any agenda item, and that's like, just, you just keep it there and whenever you send out an agenda post. And there's not much, you can only do so much, you can't literally make the horse go to the water.
Yeah. Whatever, but we'll do that, okay, great, awesome. Are we ready to move on?
Yeah.
Oh yeah. To the food services donation, this is exciting.
So, Donna De La Rosso, uh, welfare director in town, reached out to Tiffany McRight, our food service director, and said, you know, can you tell me what the total number is for any negative balances that you have for students? Uh, have some money, I'd like to pay it. Um, so, at the time that she reached out, um, it was just over four thousand two hundred dollars. Um, but she will write the check for whatever it is on the day she writes the check, um, is what she said. Um, so she's, we're looking at our active students with negative balances, our inactive students, the students who have moved, um, and students who have graduated, um, so all three of those categories. Um, and at, on the sixteenth of October, that was four thousand two hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
She's got amazing resources.
Yeah, she does, because she's like, and if you ever need it in the future, just let me know.
Yeah.
It's very generous.
Yeah, very much so.
Now, will the board, do, will the board write a thank you?
Who's gonna say, how do we, about that?
Yeah, I can, would, are, get a next, a thank you card for the next meeting to sign?
Yeah, we should acknowledge it.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm gonna text her after this, but.
Like publicly at our meeting.
Yeah, but just to.
Thank you Donna De La Rosso, oh, we can put that in, um.
Put it on a blast.[1789.42]
Put it on Facebook.
I'll go right home and create that.
So you got Facebook, who's doing TikTok? And then you got Instagram.
I'm too old, I'm too old for TikTok.
I can do, I can do both the Facebook and the Instagram.
At least until after I retire. I got a few things to say.
The day that we have teachers that only communicate through TikTok, I'm retiring.
Um, I don't know if your motion can just be to accept the donation of whatever the negative balance is as of the date of payment, that would be great, so that we're just covered.
Yes, so we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the donation on the negative lunch balances from the welfare department.
A second.
All those in favor?
Marit, a second and five oh, thank you.
Um, expenditure report in summary, anybody have any questions?
Again, we're trending fairly well, it's November, but.
So, I mean, oh, we can't talk about it in public, never mind.
No.
Um. Yeah. So the new students that moved in and the savings that we have, is this all in here?
So I built in, um, seventy-five thousand in transportation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Stacy, is there anything else that you still have outstanding?
Like, we had some savings this year, but then we had a couple of students needing services, so I'm wondering if this is all reflected.
We built seventy-five thousand in of those costs.
Okay, so I just don't wanna like, oh, yeah, they weren't in there next month.
No, they're.
And we are, I mean, we are up from last year in terms of, um, how many students are eligible for special education.
But on the lines, we're.
Transportation.
Transportation, okay.
We've accounted for seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars worth of, of additional expenses.
That was my only worry. Um, manifest approval?
I make a motion that we approve the manifest of October third through November sixth, twenty-five, in the amount of seven hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-one cents.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Athletic nomination.
Pass the board to accept the nomination for assistant girls' basketball coach as presented.
I make a motion to accept the athletic nomination as presented for the assistant girls' basketball.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have our first read.
Yeah, we just have first read policies tonight, first read policy. So the first policy, J L C D administering medication to students, we made some language changes.
Dana, can we pull J L I, the next one?
J L I A?
Yeah, we have to make some changes.
So you wanna table it?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to table it after. The next one then is J I C student conduct, um, that's a required policy. Does anybody have any questions on that one? Alright, so the next one is I J instructional resources plan. It's a policy based on a new law. Any questions on that one? The last one is J F A A, administering to resident students, we just updated it. Anybody? Questions on that one? Alright, then I move that we table policy J L I A, and we'll send it back to the policy committee, uh, for our next meeting.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then I move that we adopt as first read policies J L C D administering medication to students, J I C student conduct, I J instructional resources plan, and J F A A admission of resident students.
All those in favor? Okay, so we have our second opportunity for the public to address the board. And that opportunity is closed. Um, we do have a reason for non-public.
A and L.
What was it?
Letters A and L.
A and L, so I make a motion that we go into non-public, R S A ninety-one, dash A and L.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.